All right, welcome back everyone.
Oh no.
So we will start where we left off. We just had a presentation from our city attorney regarding the smoking ordinance and the moratorium on the vape shops. And so now for council discussion. So Madison, you have any questions for the city attorney?
Nope.
Okay. Terry?
I do have a couple of questions. One of the questions I have with the upcoming legislation that is being voted on by the state of California on our election here in November, remember to vote. How will the proposed or perhaps legality of recreational marijuana affect people living in these communities that would be designated smoke-free because from what I understand, recreational marijuana would not be allowed in public or on sidewalks or in public areas? And so wouldn't that prohibit their use of marijuana other than medical in the entire complex, their ability to enjoy that privilege if granted by the voters?
That is correct, that there would not be an exception for non-medical marijuana.
Same as smoking?
Right.
Correct. It would be treated the same as other tobacco products for purposes of the ordinance.
But with the proposed legislation, the use of recreational marijuana would be banned in public areas and in, on the streets and on sidewalks and things like that. So where would people be allowed to do that? They would have to go to someone else's home.
That is correct. The same place where people could smoke regular tobacco products would be the same place where people could smoke non-medical marijuana.
Actually, I don't think that's correct because they don't, this wouldn't allow it on, in our ordinance, it says that you could smoke tobacco on a public sidewalk.
I see the point you're trying to, I see the point you're making, yes. That is correct. If there's a more restrictive regulation with respect to non-medical marijuana, then those provisions would apply.
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, you're saying that whatever the restrictions are on tobacco would be the same on recreational use of marijuana? If it's more restrictive in this ordinance, it would apply to medical, to non-medical use of marijuana, just like smoking? Not that it would be outlawed completely, but it could be restricted?
That is correct.
I think that it would make the use of, if recreational marijuana is approved, recreational marijuana would not be allowed in public places such as sidewalks, parks, or any of the other areas that our current regulation would. Not that we allow cigarette smoking in parks, but we do allow cigarette smoking in public streets and sidewalks. So that, say, an area such as the condominiums up at the ridge, right now they could, if they decide to with this ordinance, they could make a smoking area for tobacco that is a public area but is not near, you know, children or playgrounds, things like that, and designate that as a smoking area. I don't think they could do that for recreational marijuana because that is supposed to be not in public, even if it's recreational.
Okay, so I guess we need clarification on whether the separate area that could be designated in the multi-unit housing could be also designated for recreational marijuana?
I don't know the answer to that. I would have to look more closely at what the regulations are with respect to the non-medical marijuana. My sense of it is that it would not be allowed in the designated areas, but I'm not 100% certain of that. I just don't know the answer.
No, that's fair.
Okay, well, it seems like that's not an issue that is currently, I mean, the laws haven't changed yet, so that's something that could be revisited once there may be a change in state law, but it doesn't seem like it really impacts the ordinance in its current form.
Yeah, I guess we just need to wait until after the election and see what, you know, the legislature finally massages that particular situation.
If that initiative passes, we would have to take a look at that and see how it applies both to our smoking ordinance generally, or no smoking ordinance generally, and also with respect to this as well.
If I may, you know, as I understand it, because even if somebody currently is smoking marijuana and somebody turns them in for smoking marijuana and they happen to have a medical card, but somebody calls the police department, the police would go and determine that. Is that correct, Bob? Because it's all complaint-driven.
That's right. We would, that would be the first thing we would ask, is they're in compliance with the medical marijuana laws.
And if they didn't, and even if marijuana was legal, it wouldn't be allowed to be smoked, right? If they didn't have a medical marijuana card, right? It would be in violation of the ordinance because smoking, smoking.
If that's what the city attorney is saying, that they'd be considered one in the same.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems that, you know, it's all complaint-driven anyway and that, you know, if medical marijuana is really determined by a person holding a card, a card, medical marijuana card, yeah, so it seems like.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just gotta wait until the, until the election and then just crush.
Well, that's in 10 days, and I think that this ordinance would affect, be affected by, if the voters determine to pass the recreational marijuana laws. I think that this ordinance would be in effect, and I worry that, or my concern in that respect is that it would, it seems hasty if we can wait a month to find out how the new law, if it is enacted, the voter law on recreational marijuana passes. I think how it would be implemented or affected by this ordinance is important to not be doing the work twice to try to change when we're two weeks away from a vote on it.
Can I ask the city attorney a question? So, Michael, if, this doesn't take effect for six months, right?
The enforcement, the way it's set up is that it would come into effect, but the enforcement of it would be deferred for six months in order to give persons and property owners and residents a chance to implement it, as it were.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying, Terry, but I'm not sure what effect, what would be the difference of someone smoking marijuana recreationally or smoking cigarettes, you know what I mean?
Still secondhand smoke.
In a multi-unit building, you know, even if it's passed and it's to be legal, I don't know what the difference would be.
No, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, I think the point that Councilmember O'Connell is making, that there may be some nuances with respect to whether the non-medical marijuana can be smoked somewhere else on the property other than within the units themselves. I think it's fairly clear that you can't smoke, you cannot smoke the non-medical marijuana in the units, but there might be some subtle differences in terms of whether or not that would be allowed, for example, in the common areas if you allowed smoking there otherwise. And I just don't have the answer to that particular question. And so I just don't know, I don't know the answer to it, and so I can't give you a definitive answer on it. On the other hand, if there needs to be revisions to the ordinance, you know, after the, if the initiative passes, there certainly, as you have indicated, there'll be a six-month window in which we could bring back a minor modification to the ordinance if we need to in order to bring it into compliance with the new.
With the state law, yeah.
Because we won't be enforcing it for six months anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like the appropriate path to take.
So right at this point, I wanted to ask that question, not get into the weeds of some of the weeds, so to speak, of some of the other issues and discuss it, but I wanted to ask that question specifically because I do think that, from what I've heard of how Washington state's law is, is that when they passed the recreational marijuana law, they put restrictions on where the product could be used. And their intention was to make sure that it wasn't, you know, hanging out on street corners and sitting on your front stoop kind of thing, but that left it where it was still legal to be in your home and in the privacy as an adult. And so that, I think, if you're taking away the other areas, that you wouldn't be able to use the product or make it available for anyone in that community. I think you're, if it's something that's voted on, it could be an issue, so.
Yeah, it sounds like you don't want our ordinance to be more restrictive than what the potential state law would be, or.
Well, I think the state, I think, and I, they haven't passed it, and so I'm, I'm going on what I know about other states' laws about it. And so it's where they don't want people having to go somewhere else to use their recreational marijuana. And if we make that property and they don't want it outside, they're basically saying, you know, you can go in your backyard, you can go in your home and use the product to keep it from being out on the streets. And where we're making the smoking law, where the only place on the property potentially would be on the sidewalk to smoke adjacent to a city road, then we're removing that possibility of something that the voters are voting on to be consumed at all, anywhere.
For people who live in multi-unit housing, of course.
Yes.
You'd still be able to have it if you lived in a single-family home.
Yes. So that was my concern on the new, how what is going before the voters in two weeks is going to affect what we're enacting, what we're looking at here.
Okay, all right. We have some slips, so why don't we go into those and then we can take that feedback and then have our discussion afterwards? Okay, so, let's see, I'll just start with the top one here. Karen Licaboli?
So my name is Karen Licaboli, and I am with the San Mateo Tobacco Education Coalition. I've been with the coalition for over 18 years here in San Mateo County. So I do want to just touch upon the marijuana issue because there have been county efforts to address this issue, and I just want to clarify a couple of things, that if the initiative passes, we're going to be working with communities because there is a lot of, lot more to be looking at around this initiative than just where people can smoke. There's issues of access around youth and also accessibility and exposure around youth. So our county has done extensive studies about the initiative, and just so you know, the initiative is a floor, not a ceiling. So if jurisdictions actually want to not allow there to be retailer, marijuana retail stores, you can do that. If you don't want there to be any kind of cultivation, you can do that. If you don't want any, excuse me, if you don't want any kind of advertising, you can do that. There is some minor regulations around advertising, but you can go further and more restricted than that. So if you want to say that there's going to be no retail marijuana smoking anywhere in your city, you can do that. So there'll be a whole lot more to look at than just besides this one, this one piece, and so it doesn't preclude you from adopting this particular ordinance at this particular time and date. So to move into that piece, I just want, I've been sitting there saying, you can do this! But I want to say I appreciate the staff efforts and all the city council and the mayor's efforts on this issue. It's been a long time coming, and that I think it is time to take action, since we have been working on this issue for a really long time, probably a couple of years now, and you've done your due diligence and you're in good company. As I know, most of you know that Belmont, Daly City, Foster City, Berlin Game, San Mateo, the unincorporated areas, and as of last week, South San Francisco have adopted this ordinance, some pieces of it, most of it. So the time has come, but I want to address this, one, that your ordinance is great, and then there's always the but, but it's really minor but, but it kind of goes, it's still touching upon your issue a little bit, but in the staff report, you talk about, on page three, in the middle of page three, you say, our staff says, additionally, under the proposed ordinance, smokers, they can smoke adjacent to public streets, even if that's on a sidewalk that's within 30 feet of city-owned buildings, windows, doors, ventilation systems, in multi-unit housing. My experience in the county is the fact that I would urge you to replace that word with "even" to accept, because that is an issue, that people are smoking outside of people's windows and doors. So I would just encourage you to change that to, except if the sidewalk is within 30 feet of windows, doors, or ventilation system in multi-unit housing, because that somewhat defeats the purpose of having a certain number of feet from these vulnerable areas. The one other thing I just wanted to touch upon, a couple, two other things I want to touch upon, is that this ordinance is about protecting all residents regardless of the type of, regardless of ownership. We call this design over ownership, so that if you share walls or ceilings or floors and you're smoking in your particular unit, you are exposing your neighbors to secondhand smoke. So, for example, in a condo or an HOA, that's regulated by HOA, if you move into a condo situation, you cannot paint your door whatever color you want, you cannot put any kind of extra facade on it, you can't play your music as loud as you want. You move into a condo and some multi-unit housing complexes, knowing that there are rules on your behavior in these situations, and I speak specifically about condos because they're considered private residences, but you still can't, I'm just saying that you can still, they can still be regulated as you regulate other multi-unit housings. So it's not just because they're private residences, doesn't mean that they can't be regulated. City councils and other jurisdictions and cities do it all the time. So I just wanted to make that statement, that it's about design, not ownership. And then I just wanted to touch on one, my last issue, is that there is no right to smoke anywhere. It's, smokers are not a protected class like race, gender, religion, sexual orientation. So I just want to make it clear, it's not, it's not in the constitution that smokers don't have some special abilities or some special superpowers that they should be able to smoke and expose their neighbors and other public to their secondhand smoke. So thank you for all that.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Carolyn Parker?
Okay, I am still quite reluctant to see us adopt this for the condominiums and townhouses. I feel that, as Clark said, last year, there are mean-spirited people who live in these buildings, and they spend a lot of time calling the police on their neighbors. They call the police, they come down and they fill out ordinance violations, and they're looking for a gotcha. And the neighbors that have, you know, that, where they're smoking, you know, the neighbors that are smoking and the neighbors that are upset about it go talk to each other. And I think this is a situation where people go out and add another layer of harassment to individuals that are being harassed a lot. I think that, I think any condominium or townhouse situation has at least one or more individuals who go out and really try to persecute their neighbors just for the fun of it, or because they have, I don't know, issues. I think that, that when we were looking at the figures last year, there was no increase in the amount of people who were contacting the health department about smoking before or after the ordinance went through. So I think that this is just one more layer where someone can get in there who is not a very good neighbor and really, really needle people and drive people crazy. And so I'm just bringing that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right. Randy Wang?
My name is Randy Wong, and I'm Breathe, California's local director of tobacco prevention and a member of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. And I was the person who gave the six educational sessions that were requested by the council over the spring about smoke-free multi-unit housing. And what I was telling the people who did come to those sessions was just about the science of how secondhand smoke and aerosol traveling being the real motivation for needing laws like this. It's the way that secondhand smoke and aerosol travels through walls and across units. That's really why we're needing to do this kind of ordinance. During this process, I've got the opportunity to talk with some of you and also with other members of the community, and I just want to say that I've been pleased by how much support there has been. So, since I know this council has already spent a lot of time considering this a year ago, it's just really important to turn this policy into a reality. And in the end, you know, regardless of whether people are owning their place or renting, and whether it's tobacco smoke or, you know, retail marijuana smoke, it's really about protecting people inside their homes from smoke that's secondhand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tony?
With all respect to our smoking people in town who we love very much, it's not about anti-smoking, it's about breathing clean air. And the concept that smoke is smoke. Now, I haven't read the proposed marijuana initiative yet because I haven't gotten to my research for voting yet, and I'm not sure if Terry's read it all either or not, but if anybody had read it and saw things in there that were going to definitely create a problem for us with this ordinance, I would have expected them to be prepared to identify that tonight, and it hasn't happened. I don't care what Washington and Oregon and other states are doing because that had no bearing on us at all. I do agree with the idea that the city attorney mentioned, is if something comes up, we'll deal with it. I don't see where that's a problem. I see a problem with us, unfortunately, needing a law like this, an ordinance like this, not because of anybody here who's here in this room or any, most of the people in this town who smoke, because most of them are very considerate. And if they are aware of a problem with someone else who's around them, children or others who don't smoke, most of them are very considerate, and they'll either stop smoking or move away from that person, and you don't need a law to control that. Nobody's calling the police on those people. The issue is when you get one person, like Carolyn Parker just mentioned, who's got a problem with you, and they decide they want to flaunt their ability to bother you and smoke in your face or right next to you when they know it's bothering you. And then you call the police, and the police say, gee, we'd love to help you, but there's no law against that. Too bad. So you have a choice then. You can just live with it, or you can sell your unit and move. And that's not, you know, why should one person have that power over another person? I think you really need to consider that. Personally, I don't care who's smoking anything, as long as they're not bothering somebody else. They can smoke crack or anything else, I don't care how illegal it is, as long as it's not around me and it's not bothering me, it's Bob's problem. It's not my problem. But my concern is that my current neighbors are smokers, and they're very considerate. The women don't let them smoke in the house, they make them go outside, so it's okay. Everything's all right. But if somebody else moves in there next year, they happen to be renters, and they're smoking old stogies or marijuana that I don't want to be smelling, then I have no power to do anything about it. And it doesn't matter how nice you are about it. These laws are only, most of the laws we have in this country are not made for all of us because we're all breaking the law every day. They're made for some person who is antisocial and doesn't get the message and won't follow the rules. Thank you, please pass it.
Thank you, Tony.
Ingrid, could you turn the air conditioner on, please?
Renee? You're the last one.
Hi, Renee Marmian, longtime Brisbane resident, from King's Road all the way over to the ridge. I have a problem with this ordinance because I don't think it's fair. I think if you are going to pass it, you need to pass it for everybody, just not the multi-unit people. It seems like you're penalizing people who own condos and townhouses. You're going to pass it, pass it to the residential homeowners, too. I lived up on King's Road for over 22 years, and my neighbor there smoked all the time, wonderful person. I had my windows open, his smoke came in my house. I'd shut my windows. I moved, I've lived up at the ridge for four years, I've had no problems of smoking, nothing there, and I'm in a closed unit there. I'm not a smoker, I don't smoke pot, I don't smoke cigarettes. I do have friends that come over and I have to tell them, oh, you got to go outside. And there is problems with that, because we do have malicious people up there that watch you, stalk you, and do end up calling the police on you for stuff. And then what? I tell them, oh, you have to go across the way. Well, guess what's over there? All those eucalyptus trees. And you know, maybe somebody might not put their cigarette out. Then we're going to have a fire. So I don't know. I just really disagree with just putting it to the condos and the townhouses up there. People are going to buy, what's, whether the realtor's going to say, well, do you smoke? Oh, sorry, you can't buy any of this, even if they really like the place and had cash to pay. If they're smokers, you can't buy it. So you're really penalizing people to some sort. So if you are going to pass this, you should be fair, pass it to the whole city, including the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, that was the last slip.
I have a question, I didn't get to.
Okay, yeah, I think we're ready now for council discussion, but if you have a question.
Yeah, so I had asked Michael previously.
Yeah, so I had asked Michael previously, so this ordinance, my understanding, just want to refresh everyone's recollection, was that the ordinance that was, when it was considered, I think last December, we agreed, we passed a motion saying that we would send it off for community outreach and that we intended to adopt it in its, in the same form, barring no significant opposition, which was, which was not received, I understand, but that we would pass it within a certain timeframe of, I believe, a year. And so the ordinance that we're looking at, is that the same language as what we saw last December?
That's correct. There haven't been, no other change, but no change since the last time you looked at it back in December.
Okay. And I just wanted to remind us that, you know, I understand people are giving more public comment about what their opinions are on the ordinance, but we already have looked at this issue and have passed a motion that we were going to adopt it.
I have a follow-up question to that. I wasn't on the council at that time, so I had no input in making that motion. So now that my input was not incorporated, does that impact where we are now?
No, and the fact, the simple fact that the council a year ago indicated that it intended to introduce the ordinance, you know, this council is not bound to do that. I mean, you made a decision back in December, but the ordinance wasn't introduced or adopted, so it's fair game. You know, it reflects what the council majority wanted to see last year, but obviously until it is introduced and adopted, the council is free to make whatever changes or amendments or not do anything at all.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, I mean, the only, I mean, yeah, like you said, Laura, we had already addressed this. You know, I just wanted to comment on Karen's, you know, change, which was changing even to accept, except if that sidewalk is within a city-owned building or the windows, doors, or ventilation system of a multi-unit residence. So are we okay with making that change?
Actually, the ordinance, that's simply a statement in the staff report. The ordinance doesn't actually say that. The ordinance really indicates that it shall be located at least 30 feet in any direction from operable doorway, et cetera, et cetera. So it was probably a poor choice of words to say in the staff report. The ordinance itself doesn't provide that.
All right, then, okay, then I'm fine with moving forward with this since we already dealt with it.
One of the things that we had discussed previously on this was that, part of it was that we did not want people to have to go stand in the middle of the street to have a cigarette legally if they were going to smoke. You wanted to be able to provide somewhere for that to happen. And we were talking about city property boundaries and parks and where people would be able to go safely or legally have a cigarette. And so one of the reasons that they talked about, with the exception as long as it's on a city sidewalk, was so that there would be someplace available for that. And that's what we discussed, when we discussed it. I still have objections that people who bought their homes at the ridge that happened to be multifamily homes, bought the homes with the expectation that they could smoke and their laws are being changed on them without their knowledge and may cause them to need to leave their homes. If we make it where the, the only way for a condo association to make a smoking area is to designate it and build it or make the accommodation for it, otherwise that entire property is smoke-free. And if we say, I think, I think we're taking away some, while it may not be in the constitution, I think we're taking away some property rights of people who went in and bought those homes with a certain expectation of having a right to do certain things in their home. And we're going to be coming, the bedroom police, where yes, the state, the county has talked about not having it be a problem for enforcement, that it's education, but I think for people who have that expectation to smoke, it will become an enforcement issue if we have a member of the community that, you know, wants to push the issue and make it an enforcement issue. And the other thing, and it's something that Clark brought up when we first looked at this a year ago, was that he wanted to have a real robust outreach and bring in the community and make sure people knew about it. And in the educational sessions, we had 15 people attend. Fifteen in six sessions. It tells you that people don't know what is going on. People are not aware of what's going on. And I'm just, I'm sure that there's more than 15 people that have an opinion on this or will be affected by it. And I know that we sent out a lot of letters. In fact, some members of the community got a letter that was dated the 17th to let them know about this meeting. And I know that if I didn't see a staff report and I wasn't watching for it, I would not know that this was coming up for tonight's meeting if I was concerned about it because with the amount of mail and things that are going on in the community right now with the election and the amount of bombardment you have, I'm surprised that a letter dated the 17th of November got to anyone by the 20th and was actually opened and looked at and brought to my attention that the city sent out a notice about this hearing tonight and mailed it on the, postmarked the 17th. So I still have issues with this, and I think it's taking away some of the rights of, and people disagree that it's a right, but I think it's taking away some of the property ownership benefits that people expect to have when they've bought a home, and that it will limit who is able to live in those homes.
Addison?
So I haven't been able to publicly speak on this yet because you guys were all discussing this when I was running for office. So I was here for all of your discussions as a citizen, but never as a council member. I didn't like it then and I don't like it now. I really, I can't support it, and I think we're just going to end up being on opposite sides on this one. But I think that this is an issue for the HOA, this is an issue for a landlord. I feel like it's very big brother. I feel like it's government imposing more restrictions on people. I don't like smoking, I don't think people should do it, but I, I don't feel like I should be the one to regulate people in their own homes. And the people who are part of the HOA or the person who is a landlord, they should be the ones that are deciding what's going on in those properties, not us. We have many documented cases of people who are living in those condos who are watching for people violating HOA rules and would definitely, I mean, I know that they would be looking out for people violating this. So I think, you know, if this is something that people are really concerned about in their condominium or in their multi-unit residence, then that should be something that they take up with their HOA, and that should be a decision from the people that actually live there or the landlord. So for me, I can't support it at all. And I just, I don't really know what sorts of compromises that we can make. I just feel like we're going to be on opposite sides of the issue, so I think we're just going to end up being split on this one.
Clark?
That's what it sounds like.
Yep.
Pretty clear cut. But I totally understand where you're coming from, Madison, for sure. And you too, Terry. You know, I, because when I first read it, I wasn't happy with it last year, and I wasn't happy with the part, not that I didn't think that it was good from a sense that, we all agree that smoking is not good for your health. Secondhand smoke has, you know, shown that it's not good for your health and possibly worse, you know? I mean, for people getting subjected to it, I remember the test you used to do years ago, where secondhand smoke would always go towards the non-smokers versus the smokers. And it was weird because it was just, and you know, it was, I forget what the term was called, but...
Just like the campfires.
Huh?
Just like the campfire.
Yeah. Yeah. But you know, last year, I was the one also that initiated to do the outreach, and that was one of the things that I looked at was the educational aspect of it. You know, I understand, you know, that people bought their property and, you know, maybe smokers and stuff like that, and I agree with that, you know, to a degree, but I also thought that if we did the outreach and talk with people, you know, and see what kind of feedback we get, we did the outreach. You know, and I initiated doing the outreach, I said I won't support it until we do it, and we have done it. And, you know, I initiated that, so I have to support it now because, you know, a lot of people put in a lot of time, you know, that's what they do, but it was educational, but you know, I can't sit there and say, nah, forget it, I was just kidding, or something like that, you know what I mean? I have to follow up on what my word is.
Yep, I remember you saying that.
I certainly understand where you're coming from, so I'm willing to move forward with it.
Sure. I agree with Clark. You know, we've been through this process, we did the outreach. I understand your point of view, both of you, Madison and Terry, but I think, you know, I'm seeing it from the perspective of public health and, you know, there's no constitutional right to smoke. This is about protecting people's right to breathe clean air. And, you know, it's, the science is clear on secondhand smoke. We heard all the reports about all the health effects and, you know, countless numbers of other cities have gone in this direction. And I think we need to just move forward with it. And if I recall correctly, I thought it was a unanimous vote back in December to go forward with the outreach. I don't remember if, Terry, you voted against it at that time, but I'm a little surprised to see at this point that we're not moving forward as I thought we had agreed on. And, you know, I think that, you know, we have to remember where it started. There was a Brisbane resident who came to us who said her two-year-old boys were breathing in smoke every day, and she couldn't stop it. She tried to go to the, to the people who were doing it, and they wouldn't stop, and so she went to the county, and that's when they got involved. So we, you know, we were responding to our residents and to our constituents. And it's, you know, there was some comments tonight about people trying to stop smokers just for the fun of it. That's not what I'm seeing happening. It's because people feel like their lives, their health is being affected, and, you know, I would hate to be in that position if I were living inside a, you know, a rental unit or even a condo, you know? Just because you buy a house doesn't mean you have the right to smoke in it and affect the health and what other people breathe in if they're living, if you're living in communal living. It's just, you know, when you, when you live in that sort of environment, you have to be more aware of, you know, the impact of your behavior on other people in your building. So I'm seeing it from that perspective. And, you know, we went through all this community outreach. The fact, Terry, that there wasn't a lot of opposition, I think actually speaks to the fact that there, that there wasn't, I mean, that, you know, that there was support for this. So I don't see any sense in continuing to dig for further opposition. I mean, we did an extensive community outreach for six months. I was at some of those meetings. There were some people who did come, and, you know, our town is a small town, so if people are paying attention, they will see the flyers and learn about things that are happening. And the, you know, with the issue about the medical marijuana, I don't see that as a reason to not move forward. That issue is going to affect the ordinances in all the cities that have rules on multi-unit housing, smoking regulations. So it's something that I'm sure the county is well aware of and is going to be looking into, and, you know, they will hopefully be able to provide us with guidance on how to, you know, make some minor modifications if that becomes an issue. But I'm glad that we're finally revisiting this issue, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with it tonight.
I think it's also important to note that, like, there was very, very strong opposition at many of our meetings, so while people may have not come physically, like, we did have a lot of physical people in our meetings showing their opposition, and so I feel like, and we did receive a lot of emails in opposition as well, so I think that that's important to note, that I think it was split fairly 50-50 in our community. So while, yes, you know, some of our constituents were very supportive of this, there was a very good amount of people that were not, and so, you know, I think probably Terry and I, what was said from those constituents is what resonated with us. So that there, you know, there were a lot of people that did come forward and said that they weren't in support of this and why. So I do just want to make it very clear that, like, there was very strong opposition and support from the community on both sides. It wasn't that there was just very, very strong support, and Terry and I are like, we don't like it, you know? So there were a lot of points made in opposition as well.
And even tonight, while we have two members of staff that have come from, you know, anti-smoking groups, we have two members of the public who spoke against it and one that spoke for it. And so, again, we're a community divided in certain directions, and this is one of them. So while I think that had this issue been for tonight's agenda, had more publicity, we would have had a different mix of people here, probably, again, split on both sides of the coin.
Well, the opinions may be split, but I think the science is clear that there is no safe level of secondhand smoke, and so...
Okay, well, I'm not going to argue the science with you.
It's the science that, to me, is most persuasive.
You know, I, yeah, I think we're at that, the point in the discussion that we have three people that are for moving forward to or not, and I'll just briefly say why I'm for it. I am a strong proponent of property rights and, you know, personal abilities to enjoy their home, but it shouldn't be at the detriment of someone else's health. And so that's where I come down on that. We did do the outreach, and maybe it didn't satisfy, you know, your level of participation, but we did do it. And so with that, I will entertain a motion to move forward with ordinance number 611.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 611 regarding the prohibition of smoking in multi-unit residences, expiration of moratorium on establishing and operating vape shops.
All right.
Second?
I have one question for staff before we continue. Does this waive the second reading, or does, there will be a second reading of this?
Correct, we'll bring it back on the, it will be, typically, these are on for the consent calendar, but we can put it on as old business since it's a split vote, whatever the council feels is appropriate that way.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
Against.
Okay.
Against.
Right, so...
Against.
All right, so moving forward to...
So, at the time, Mr. Mayor, can we go through and ask staff, uh, maybe put some stuff off?
Sure.
Um, excuse me. So I'm going to have to do this kind of on the fly. So the, the first, A, we could postpone, um, Randy, what?
Sure.
B and C, we could postpone. D is just, you already know that. So we, we could, we, we can postpone the new business section.
Okay. I mean, are there any items, Clay, that you feel we could just probably get through fairly quickly? I mean, uh...
Well, that's always a risky thing to say, but...
Risky thing, I mean, you know...
Well, we haven't extended the, we haven't extended the meeting yet, so I'd make a motion to extend the meeting until 11 o'clock.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I, I think B and C are pretty straightforward, but unless there's questions...
Yeah, let, you know, A, let's, that, that one will probably take some discussion, so...
I think D, I think D needs some discussion also.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go into item number C then. Consider introduction of ordinance number 610.
All right, well, Mayor Rotem, council members, good evening. So the essence of this is to change the stormwater chapter of your municipal code to make it very clear that leaking vehicle fluids are also prohibited from discharging onto the city streets and gutters and getting into the storm drain. That's, that's the essence of it. Right now, that is not crystal clear. We are having trouble using the administrative action section of our code, and unfortunately, we do have repeat offenders who just don't get that you're feeding oil into the gutter and it reaching the catch basin puts it in the bay, so this just strengthens that for us. Be happy to take questions.
All right. Any questions for Randy?
Nope.
Motion to introduce ordinance number 610.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Um, you know, you think...
We can do item D. I don't see why we can't do item D.
Okay, let's do item D.
Yeah, let's do that.
D is a dog.
That's right, D is a dog, that's, yes.
Okay. D is just a letter that was submitted to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors with regards to the resolution that they were, or are considering, in part, the, what we consider to be fairly obnoxious language with regards to annexation. They have delayed their hearing before their committee to a date uncertain, and I'll keep you informed of that. This letter is on our website, so if the public wants to take a look at it.
Yes, and that was probably to be expected. Good to, to be on top of it.
Yeah. Well, we'll stay on top of the, whatever schedule they're going to have on that.
Okay. So, um, do we want to try and dive into item B? I mean, it's, I didn't think it was going to be an issue, but I know that, Terry, that you thought that it might take some time?
Yeah, I, I do think that it might take some time.
Well, let's skip it.
Okay, so we can skip that. So let's go into staff reports. Clay?
I'll be very brief. Just, uh, November 19th and 20th, 20th will be the annual yard waste cleanup weekend. We are still accepting planning commission application through October 28th, which is next Friday. The Bay Area SunShares program, information is on our website, and their date for inclusion in the program is November 4th. And then, just to let you know, we will have in the November star, uh, the advertisement for the mosquito abatement district trustee.
Okay. And how many applications have you been getting for the planning commission? All right, and have all of the current planning commissioners that are up for reappointment, have they applied? All but one?
Is that six, like, including the ones from that applied last time, or are they six new ones?
We'll, we'll have the complete...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, the one that, that also includes the people that have applied last time, and a couple that have applied during Day in the Park.
We'll, we'll have the complete list for you on your next council agenda, and then you can set your, your dates for interviews.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. All right. Okay, so, um, under mayor council members, any subcommittee countywide items?
Um, Lori and I had a fiscal policy meeting, and I attended a CCAG meeting, and beyond that, my brain has not functioning anymore.
Last night, we had a meeting.
Excuse me?
Last night, we had a meeting.
Oh, yes, we did. Last night, we had the OSEC Open Space and Ecology liaison meeting, and talked to them about their work plan, and had a very nice discussion about many things.
Yep.
Good. Laura?
Yeah, so I have a bunch of things, I guess, we've been busy. We had an economic development subcommittee meeting, it seems like a long time ago now, it was like a few weeks ago. I think we got just a general update, and also we talked about the electronic billboard application process, and that's going to be coming before the council at some point. Yesterday, Clark and I had a two-by-two subcommittee meeting with the school district, and we, we looked at updating the JPA agreement. We got to meet the new superintendent. You and I went down to Long Beach for the League of California Cities Conference, which was very informative, and we also had a, an opportunity to attend a conference with the people who run One Planet Living. So that was really interesting, and we got to talk about, like, in depth about, you know, like, what their model is. So that was, that was kind of exciting. And then today, I went to, as a board member for Peninsula Clean Energy, I went to, there was a summit, a policy summit for, it's called California CCA, and it's basically all the people who are in all the different community choice aggregation programs throughout California, and we talked about all our strategies and outreach, and that was very informative. Yep.
All right. How about you, Clark?
I just had, had the one Lori mentioned, the two-by-two, and then the one that's on item C under mayor council matters, you and I for the...
That's right, we had a Baylands Subcommittee meeting, yeah. So, yeah, that was a good meeting that we had, Clark, and I guess we'll kind of transition into that in regards to One Planet Living. Yeah, Perron, oh, blanking out on Perron's last name, but one of the co-founders of One Planet Living. Yeah, so Lori and I met at the Integral Group's office in, down in Southern Cal, down in LA, and he unveiled his new system for One Planet Living. Then he came up here to talk with the Baylands Subcommittee, and Clark and I had an opportunity to...
It's basically a planning tool that utilizes, where you can plug in scenarios, which eventually would print out a plan. It's basically a planner's tool, and, uh, you know, how, exactly how that would unfold, you know, or how we'd utilize something like that. Right now, it's in the maybe alpha or beta stage of development, so it's, it's limited on what it can do, but there's some pretty cool features that it has. It's worth taking a look at. I don't know if it'd get us where we want to go, but ultimately, when we go through this whole process, it might be a tool that we utilize, you know, so I don't know.
Yeah, and actually, as part of that, we talked about, like, the Roanoke Park development. They, that's a One Planet Living community, and I, I had mentioned to the, to the One Planet Living folks that I would, you know, I would love to get a chance to look at that development, just to see what a One Planet Living community actually looks like. And I know a couple of members in the past of our council have been, but if, if a lot of us are interested, perhaps we might want to work, think about organizing a field trip up to Roanoke Park. Just wanted to...
Yeah, no, I think that would be good, yeah. Ray Miller and myself went up there several years ago, and, and from that, that meeting, you know, that, that tour, we became very excited about the One Planet Living concept, and, and that, I think, you know, really helped to drive the direction of the sustainability framework being adapted from that One Planet Living concept.
Yeah, well, one of the things we had talked about on a previous subcommittee that caused this meeting with Perron was, um, how would we be able to, what would be the term, you know, estimate or calculate what we're doing is, you know, financially feasible or good for the city? You know, how do we, you know, look at it from an economic standpoint, like the externalities or life cycle type of thing? And it's very difficult to find somebody that does that type of work, and that's one of the things that was kind of driving it too. And then looking at his tool doesn't really, really get there with that, but, you know, he may be able to add that in there at some point, I don't know.
Yeah, well, you know, I, so we're planning to do a workshop in January, besides the Baylands, I mean, I, I think it also has some, some very good capabilities of helping us to implement sustainability goals for the spark site precise plant. You know, and, and so we want to make sure that what we plan outside our doors here, you know, meets the, the standards of sustainability that the community would like to see. And so I, I think his, his, his new tool will help to be able to allow the community to participate in providing input in regards to sustainability for the precise plan. So I think, I think that'd be a, a very good tool to explore as we finalize the document.
Okay. So are we going to talk about scheduling?
Yeah, we're segueing into item three.
Yes, so...
So we need to extend the meeting again if we're going to do this?
Okay, how about to 11:10? I think we should be able, or how about, let's make it 11:15 so we don't have to extend it? Is everyone good with that?
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So, all right, so our, our schedule for upcoming meetings?
The One Planet Living workshop.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, so in January, so Clay?
The, it was pointed out to us that the Monday, January 16th is actually Martin Luther King Day, so that probably would not be a good date, but the rest of them, he indicated a general availability in January, so these are some dates that we suggested, and there's some other dates the council would be interested in, just let us know.
How long do we expect it to last? Because the first date only would allow for one hour, but the others are more open.
Um, well, those, again, it's always kind of difficult to answer, but I think in terms of his presentation, it's probably, you know, a half hour or so, and then it's Q and A. So I think we could probably do it in an hour, but again, it depends on how many questions and might come up.
Yeah, I, I'd like to just have the additional time, so...
Or we could start at 6:00 that night.
No, yeah, well, well, I think it's nice not to have a council meeting after, so we can just take as much time as we need, right? I mean...
Yeah, I was thinking that, that it should just be a separate, non-council meeting that is just focused on One Planet Living, and I think we, we even kind of talked about that.
Well, the other dates are all non-council meetings.
Non-council meetings, okay. So we want to pull out our calendars and kind of give some guidance?
Sitting on a charger.
They're saying before the council meeting.
When is our last meeting in December?
December 15th.
Any other dates? I prefer it to be later in January. I'm trying to take, like, some time to go travel to Europe, so...
Well, we have a council meeting on the third, on the, on the 5th, so, January 5th.
Maybe not then. All right, well, I guess it doesn't really matter.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm available all the dates, so whatever works.
We have a council meeting on the 19th, right? That's a Baylands meeting?
That's a Baylands meeting, yeah.
So...
16th, 17th.
Maybe the 10th then, or the 9th or 10th?
How about the following week?
Well, you mean, but after the Baylands meeting? Wouldn't it be helpful to have that information, though?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So that we can use it during the Baylands?
It's also, Perron is going to be out, because he's from England.
Yeah.
So even though it's kind of a hassle to do it before a council meeting, I'd rather just have everything in one night versus having to take up another night for another meeting.
So I'm saying Tuesday the 17th is on, um, I can do Tuesday the 10th. I don't, I don't really want to do it the same week as the council meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we should, it, it should be separate. I mean, this is, I mean, if, if our sustainability framework is going to be based upon the One Planet principles, we really need to educate the community, and I think just focus the meeting or that, that event at that time.
Well, how about Tuesday the 10th then?
Does that work?
I can do the 9th or the 10th, or the 17th, really.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand Madison's wanting, if it's only a half an hour meeting, that, you know, it might be good to do it before the Baylands, because we're not going to get into the, the sustainability portion of the Baylands in that stage of the meetings.
No, no, but I, I do think that, you know, we want to be fair to the public, that, you know, and, you know, I, I think Perron's presentation will probably take about 30 minutes, perhaps, and then there's going to be council questions, and there'll be, you know, you want the community to be able to, to ask questions.
Okay, well, I'm available the 9th, 10th, or the 17th.
Why is it only 6:00 or 7:30? Why is there, like, no...
No, it's, it's, it's 6:00, 6:00 PM, or 7:30 PM is the start time. I would suggest Tuesday the 10th at 7:30.
Me too.
But so why, though? Like, can it be at 7?
Huh?
Does it, it can't be in...
Get started earlier?
Yeah.
Usually Lori's schedule prefers 7:30, so, and 6 o'clock is...
7:00 or 7:30 is fine. Tuesdays are more flexible, Mondays wouldn't work.
I'm, I'm okay with 7:00, Madison. Mondays are out for me.
Okay, yeah, 6:00 is no good, but like, I can start at 7:00.
Okay, so 7:00 o'clock on the 10th?
Tuesday the 10th, 7:00 PM.
Okay.
That was easy.
Will you just, will you send out an invite? Okay. Awesome.
Okay. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
We have oral communications.
Oh, um...
Oh, we have oral...
Oh, yeah, we do have oral communications, and we actually...
Any item that's not on tonight's agenda that...
Written communication.
We've already talked about it.
That, if anyone wants to make a comment on, okay.
Hang out.
All right. All right, so...
Oh, written, I guess we didn't do written communications.
We did receive some written communications, and we had one from Elmer.
And one from Tony Varios?
Yes.
I wasn't quite sure what Elmer was getting at, but I guess it's more of a staffing issue.
So, before we adjourn, I, I'd like to just adjourn in memory of Vicki Myers...
Yeah.
...who passed away recently in an automobile accident, and...
Tragically.
Our condolences to, to her family, and I hope that her, her daughter is, is recovering well.
I think there's also been a, like, a GoFundMe or some sort of social media website, you know, fund that's set up for the family, so I know that's been publicized in the community. I'd encourage people to go check that out.
Absolutely, yeah, if they can, yeah, contribute whatever they can, that would be very, very nice.